Okay, let's call the meeting in order, please. Commissioner Hack will be a few minutes late, another ten or fifteen minutes for him. So he will be coming shortly, but at this time, if we don't rise, move our hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, everybody got the minutes from the January fifteenth meeting? Any changes or additions or questions?
Motion to approve and suspend the meeting.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Pillar, discussion. All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye. Aye, proposed. Thank you, carried. Four, approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda? I did ask those two gentlemen to come in, so we're gonna put under five B, we'll put Peace Lutheran Church. With Ricky and Bob. Any other changes or additions?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda with the additional Peace Lutheran Church under category five B.
Okay, motion by Pillar. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, proposed, same sign. Carried, thank you. Okay, five A. Two thousand eighteen Street Project Task Order Amendment. You guys have all saw in your minutes that we have an amendment for the, I guess, the Task Order number five, which was the one we asked for more work to be done on measurements and engineering for the add-ons. Is that right, Mark?
Correct.
Come on, forward, explain anything you'd like to.
Well, you should have the letter accompanying the task order explaining what we were looking at, and at the time that we were having the discussions for all the alternatives and whatnot, we really hoped to fit all of that into the original budget, and weren't able to. So that's why we're having to do now, requesting approval for the amendment.
Okay. And we did ask you to do quite a bit more, so I'm not surprised by this. Any questions from Mark? So then all these, all these ISFIs are for the work that's already been done, right? If there's other questions or concerns from Mark, we need the motion to approve this Task Order, for the amendment.
So moved.
Yeah, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Pillar, discussion. Rule call. Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar, aye. Stern.
Aye.
Ogunahor.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five B, Peace Lutheran. I contacted both these gentlemen, Ricky and Bob, under advisement from Pat. We've talked about this, where the, there's not a very good line of delineation for, where the street project is gonna occur on the east side of the church. You guys have a meeting tomorrow night, correct? Okay. You, would you want me or a couple of us to come to your meeting also? It's where, basically, we need to get an easement for this, not just the project, but I guess for future use of that road. And Pat, you wanna explain more why you think we need to do this? Even though we've been using it for umpteen years, I guess that's just the correct way to proceed and do this project? I don't know.
Well, originally, your properties are part of a subdivision that was planted many years ago called the Bennyson subdivision. There were various lots planted in there. There weren't dedicated streets. In other words, when that plot was crafted by Bennyson, he didn't draw a street up where the present street exists and dedicate it to the public. So it's still privately owned property, along with all the property on it. But I think, well, no, there may have been some on the west side that was actually deeded to Hazen later, after they discovered that it wasn't city property. But it's not, I haven't looked at documents, so I'm not certain exactly where the boundaries lie, but it's clear that from north of almost the beginning of your, where your two streets meet, what is it, Central Avenue? Almost from that point going north is, on the east side, is not city of Hazen property, either by deed or by dedication in the plot. And that's what we're looking for, either an easement, or if you want it granted to the city, that probably would be better if you deeded it to the city. But, of course, that's gonna be up to you folks as to what's done there. Why couldn't we just give an easement for them? You could give an easement. You know, by law, easements are supposed to be limited, ninety-nine-year easements. Some people can't have perpetual easement. Some people turn around it and try to just say ninety-nine-year term, and it will renew automatically for successive ninety-nine-year term. I mean, the point is, I guess, it'll probably always be used as a street, unless you don't agree with that.
Well, I don't, I don't know what, I mean, we all need a street.
Yeah. Well, and you may wanna seek your own advice in terms of how it affects you, with ownership, retaining ownership of it, even if you grant easement. You would still own the underlying street. And I'm not sure what other, if there's utilities on there or so on that have given an easement for utilities. I really don't know what's going on there right now. You guys probably have more knowledge about what's under.
Was there work, I don't know if there was work being done directly east of the church, Mark, do you?
I believe there, we have a sanitary line going there.
That's not on the west side of the church, though? Oh, it's on the east, okay.
East side, yeah.
All right.
Are there utilities on the east side?
There's the sanitary, right. And I'm not sure about old water. Old water, old water, okay. Old water.
Well, we don't know about the curb stuff yet, right?
That's the one.
Still a mystery. So Pat, what's the simplest way to go about this?
Well, it's either the easement or a quick coin deal, once we describe the roadway and know where it's at, exactly. And make sure that it's a property that's a jewel that you are giving to the city or giving the city an easement for.
How can we know what our property is and when that come about ahead of it? It was from our conversations, and we understood that the city had that responsibility to the east, and we owned it to the west, because years ago, we used to block that off for vacation by the school on the west side, just use that area there for parking.
Do you have abstracts for your properties that you?
Because we stopped at the street角.
How formal are Kim Lake's drawings that were put together?
Well, Kim did his own for the church.
Yeah, yeah.
And so he's already done the research.
So he did the research and he documented that, is it a matter of that being filed then, or with whatever direction is appropriate, whether it's an easement or if it's deeding it over to the city? I don't know, the legalities of the document that he put together, if that needs to just be notarized and filed.
Oh, no, that wouldn't be a convention. That's just a drawing.
Okay.
There's no title block, no signature. Yeah, I've got, I've got one here, his name's not even attached.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's a couple of things that need to be done. Number one, you need to, it's really up to the landowner to know what they own and what the boundaries are of their property. So that'll be up to you guys to determine, and you've got a good start with what Kim's already done for you, so he could probably tell you, here's the boundaries of what you own. And then the second thing would be to make a decision as to whether or not it should be a grant of an easement or a deed that quickly maybe just release your interests, your ownership interests in that property completely. So you, you know, the easement is a right of use over the surface, doesn't have anything to do with anything but what the easement is designed to be given for. So if it's for transportation purposes, like a highway or a roadway, you know, this, that's all that you're allowing it to be used for. If you quick coin your interest in the entire ownership, it's supposedly, you know, from the surface to the center of the earth to the heavens above, so it's a different type of release of your ownership or transfer of ownership. But both of those are documents that would have to be recorded and kind of recorded on this, whether it be easement or a quick coin deal.
Well, we're still gonna do the project.
And I know, I've talked with both you guys, that you're good with this happening, but we just, you know, just wanna make sure it's, we have it on paper and it's legal, we actually know where, where whose and what's and, you know, just wanna make sure it's right. But, so if you guys wanna discuss at your church council tomorrow night, it's nothing that we have to decide on tonight, obviously, or the next, even by the next meeting, if we can get some information, that'd be great, but this doesn't affect you, Mark, in any way, does it? Or? Yeah, I didn't think so.
Not at this point. I mean, by construction, obviously, you'd wanna have resolution.
Now, I will say this, that I would love to see it be a two lane, two lane on the east side of the church, and not even go around the west side anymore. That'd be real, real nice if we could do that, but at this point, that's probably not gonna happen, but just putting your, your computer down the road, that'd be.
Well, it wouldn't be wide enough.
We'd have to widen it, it'd have to be, yeah, widen quite a bit, and that'd be quite a bit of trees, and, you know, either Mrs. Smith's property, or else we'd have to go around and then come back to, you know, kind of weave around it a little bit, but it'd be nice to avoid that west side. But, I know that's, when Robert came at one time, that's what was one of his thoughts, also, could do away with that. Except, you know, that concrete over there is such bad shape. But anyhow, so if you guys wanna discuss that with your council and get back to us, then we will do whatever we need to, unless you just say, we don't wanna mess with it, just do what you gotta do, that's, it's totally up to you guys, I guess, but we'd like to see it done properly, okay? So appreciate you coming. You got any questions for us, guys?
And you said, I don't think we have anything else at all, we just wanna get done, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thanks for coming, appreciate it. Six A, under six, we have requests, citizens, we have three, three of them, I would, if you want, someone wants to mention all three in one, motion to individual, that's, me, if you have any questions on these three.
Motion approved, all three in one.
Okay, we have a motion by hack to approve six A, B, and C.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, proposed. Thank you. Down to eight, A, application for abatement on taxes for the jutinence. Shannon, anyone?
Um, yeah, she noticed, I'm not even sure how she noticed it, but the fact their square footage was off. And what happened is they had this little cold storage area on the back of their garage, I believe that they were gonna build, and it was on plan, so it all got cleared in the computer that way, and they've been getting taxed on that square footage since they built the house, and they wanted that corrected. So that's what this is, is just to decrease the value of their house, taking off that square footage that never was built onto the property.
The race solid application, any questions for, thoughts on that? Casey.
So then, so then, like this process will must be done by what, like April fifteenth or something?
It can actually, it can actually go back, can be, go back to the prior year. Abatement's can be done at any time of the year, is my understanding.
She looks at hers a lot closer than I do. She looked at hers a lot closer than I look. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
I need your motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yeah. I will take a motion if someone's like to it, I'm sorry. Motion by hack to approve the abatement.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Rule call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ogunahor.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under reports, I just, I visited with John Dolly the other day, and by Peace Lutheran Church, they have taken down two of the three big poplars and left about four-foot-tall stumps. The plan, I think, is to wait till we get a contractor in with a track hoe and then pull the stumps out of the ground instead of spending more time taking them all the way down, then grinding the stumps and just pull them out with the track hoe at some point.
Do we end up doing doors?
We did, we did those two, we will on the third. John, I don't know if we talked to you, but possibly maybe getting ahold of MDU to make sure that they might be around, that there are some lines on our side there.
I think we can get them done, we just ran out of date and it wasn't turned cool. I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
You think just pull it to the southwest, be good enough, yeah?
Yeah, we'll just limit, cover small chunks that drop straight down instead of very thick falling towards the power lines, so that's not gonna be an issue.
Okay.
So that's just being assessed back to the property then? Remote rule of those, those trees?
No, no, we're doing that.
These were on our, on the city's border?
It's a priority.
Okay. Well, these are the ones next to Mrs. Smith's, so, okay. Does Johnny, Johnny had talked to me before also about some trees on the southwest corner of the church, they got first property on this corner that goes.
Those are down and those are assessed back to the property.
Got it.
Streets cemetery.
We don't really have anything at this time, those abey you. I know there's been some talk about, why aren't we moving snow, and we've got a rule of some, of how many inches of snow.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go after Main Street in the morning and try to pull everything away from the curbs, not that the businesses have all their sidewalks, that's all down in the curbs, so we're gonna pull that all to the middle and do like from J and L all the way to City Hall here, clean up Main Street. One other thing I had, I think I mentioned to you and Monty or whatever, we should get probably three little pushmowers.
Yes.
And stuff like mitigating prices and whatever.
That's right.
Yeah. We have two of them in pretty tough shape and all this marketing.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, sorry. They haven't talked to me about that, I think, I think it'd be a good time now to purchase those since it's off-season, but he's gonna give some quotes to us.
And I was wondering if, if you would wanna do anything with the outpost that was off there? I sit by a little storage shed, the roof that's blown off that a couple of years ago, and the door won't close. If anybody wants to fix it, I don't know if anybody uses it visiting with Monty, if I should just remove it and fill in the hole, or if I should repair it. I don't know if anybody ever really using it, but in the shape it's in, it's kind of not usable with all the roof and stuff on it.
Yeah, I think it's traction itself, but.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it doesn't look very nice either. And I don't know if I, does anybody ever request you to use that, your kid keys, or is it locked?
No.
Do you need a motion to your?
Well, if you guys just, I don't think we need a motion to your, like, take a closer look at it. Anything else, Dave, or? Finance, Buster?
Nothing at this time.
Police, fire, forestry?
Visiting with the fire department, they have received their new, we'll call it mini rescue slash quick attack vehicle, very, very nice, they've got it all equipped. The principal of that was taken care of by county funding, but they equipped it with the rescue tools, and it also carries water, so it'd be a first responding vehicle up there. And at the end of this month, approximately eight of our firefighters will be traveling up to Minot for the state fire school. A portion of that takes place at Fairgrounds and then in a couple of the local hotels up there, so they go. And it sounds like they're gonna be taking that new truck up there, and it'll be on display so other people can see what he has enhanced up, offer their citizens and strong their communities. And our new policeman is actively out on the streets on his own, and rumor has it, he's been pretty aggressive out there and has been taking care of business. So he's setting the stage and the expectations of folks out there that we need to be law-abiding citizens. It's a good thing, that's what we're paying for. That's it.
Thank you. I'm just gonna echo what Dan just said about our new, I've had numerous people approach me in the last couple of weeks about our police force and how they see them more actively out giving tickets for speeding. A friend of mine's son was pulled over for rolling through a stop sign, and when the dad approached me, I thought, okay, here we go, but he was appreciative, you know, so he was, he was glad that his son was actually stopped, which is great, so I'm happy to see that that, until it's me, I guess, is, they're doing their jobs. HCD.
Hey, just a little update, we could go, last Friday, we had another go-around open house at Pioneer. We had a couple of the, we have two of the rooms now that are staged with furniture in there, and then also our tenant that's in there was gracious enough to have her place open. We had really a pretty good turnout, we had about, just about close to fifty people that came over there. So that, that was good, and the other thing is, is that there were like four applications that were picked up from people that went through, so I haven't heard anything about, you know, those apps, how really they build them all, whatever, but hopefully the word will get out now that, you know, those rooms look so much different when there's furniture, it just makes such a difference, so hopefully we'll soon start hearing maybe a little more positive results with, I think it's intense, and it's still a little early, and we have this cold weather, you know, it's gonna take a little bit probably to get people on comfortable weather. That's all I have.
Thank you, Buster. I'm gonna go back to A, under my report, I just wanted to mention that Mr. Edwards here, that Doug has contacted me a couple of times and talked about a few things, and he's gone through the plans, and he's noticed a couple of things on Albert Woods, and been relating those, those questions and comments to, between Monty and Mark and yourself, so I wanna thank you, Doug, for bringing that stuff to our attention. Ten A, correspondent for Coast Health, contract for services, as Monty said, it's changing a little bit, and, but it's kind of one of those things where we don't have much of a choice. Is that correct, Monty?
We're gonna go and find our own lab to do our water sample testing, we don't know that to find anybody that doesn't just reasonably assist the state. The biggest change on this is the fact that they're not making it their annual thing, it'll be self-renewal until one of the parties requests, makes written request within thirty days to terminate it, so you don't have to do this process every year anymore.
Okay. All right, but we do need a motion to enter to, to continue the agreement we've been through already. Now, I would accept that motion now, so I'm willing to do so. And we have a motion by Pillar and a second by Stern, discussion. Rule call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ogunahor.
Aye, motion carried. Ten B, donation requests for Hazen Arts Council and Hazen Post Prom. In the past, we've done, we've been pretty consistent with our donations with these, we've been donating since two thousand ten, I thought your list had them, Monty.
Two thousand nine, ten.
Okay, so we've done between twenty-five and fifty annually for the arts and hundred twenty-five for the post prom. What would you guys like to do this year, if anything?
What were we doing for council, arts and crafts?
I believe thirty-five.
Last three years was thirty-five dollars.
But we've done fifty before.
Okay, and then?
Make a motion, we echo that, do thirty-five for the Hazen Arts and Crafts Association and one twenty-five for the post prom, maybe?
Here we have a motion by Hack.
Second.
And a second by Wolf, discussion. Rule call.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ogunahor.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. And under twelve. And under twelve A, Monty sent out the city two thousand seventeen budget amendments.
I guess I tried to explain the reason for the amendments that was requested. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Sure, a question. You know, on the revenues, I don't quite guess I like match, I guess, what the what the new transfers are, so then so then all of that money, does that go then go there and like in the general fund or?
As far as.
As like last year's.
As far as the revenues?
Yeah.
Yeah. Basically, whatever was in each fund, you know, like the general fund, there was nineteen thousand more than what we had budgeted, so that went into the general fund. Highway distribution, there's twenty three thousand more than what we had budgeted, so it's in the highway distribution fund.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it stays with.
It stays in the fund, okay.
Any other questions for Monty or?
So the the values you show there are new values or the additive to those particular categories when you? Those are just the amounts of the amendments that are required. So in what you just said there, the nineteen thousand eighty two dollars and fifty two cents to the general fund, that's additional revenues coming in. Over what we had. We had set up in the approved budget.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we need a motion to accept the budget amendments. So motion by Pillar. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
All right. Motion carried. And before we go continue to build, just a reminder that Thursday, we have our bid openings for the street project at four o'clock and I will be here for sure and Dan will be here. All right, okay, all right. And Monty said there's about eighteen companies that have taken up.
That's what, that's what it was late last week. I didn't have a chance to get it today, but yeah, there's been a lot of interest.
That's great.
We've been getting a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, you know, questions, things like that, so a lot of interest out there.
Okay. Mr. Edwards, if you're around, you're sure welcome. It's open in public.
All right. Excuse me.
Okay. Approval of the bills.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Hack.
I'll second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. Light repairs on West Main Street. On page.
Snatens.
About page three, yeah.
That was for that valve and cord that had to be fixed across from.
The rolling shaft.
Everything from the valve in was, the property was responsibility, but it was still had the copper lines at the main. So they said while they were in there, they figured it would make just as much sense to do it right away. So we've got the cord on the main and then the valve disarmed.
Okay. And when I talked to Ryan, he said that it basically fallen right out.
Yeah.
And then where's the where's the bill for the, our portion by the hockey rink?
That was all, that was, it should have been on the original bill, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
That was thirty five hundred.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Pat.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
All right. Motion carried. You adjourned. Thank you.